When did you put Joseph Shang on?
He was.
I think it's today.
Seven o'clock, so we call the meeting to order. Any additions to the agenda? There's one to be deleted, four point one, the delegation. Our MLA had to have some sooner, so. Okay, hearing none, somebody wished to move the additions or the agenda is presented loud. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Hasn't come up on mine.
It says it's sending.
It's slow.
Very slow.
Slow today. Actually, it's slow.
I've got it up.
Yeah, does anybody else got it?
No.
Okay, well, we'll.
Do a raise of hands.
Raise your hands if they were.
Oh, here we are.
Oh, there's.
You scared it.
Yeah.
Now we'll see if it'll answer. We all clicked on at the same time now, it's processing, so. Anyway, it was carried unanimously.
We wanted to get through the meeting quickly.
Well, I mean.
Title says one person voted for it.
Mine doesn't say anything, but anyway.
I can fill it in if you like.
Yes, please. It was unanimous, okay. Okay, moving on to the minutes. Is there any questions on anything in the minutes? Any areas of issues?
They look very good as usual.
Can you betcha? Okay, Paul moves them. Any question on Paul's motion?
What's going on?
Don't care.
Oh, it's moved. I brought up the one from last one.
So the agenda ones is coming up now on mine.
Yeah.
I'll change it later.
Okay, so are you gonna bring up the one for the minutes?
I'm trying.
Oh, okay. Okay, so Paul moved that one. Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. So hopefully the question will come up. Nope, it's not being counted at all, so.
You can do that.
So I guess we'll, those in favor, it's carried unanimously. Okay, five point one. GST response to the letter that we sent, or that can be sent, on our behalf. Any questions on that from Martin Shields?
Very to the point like Martin is.
Yeah, yeah.
Very straightforward.
Okay, move on to five point two, the franchise agreement, fee change if we want.
So what they did is they didn't send an official letter, they sent an email, so I gave you a copy of it. And really, it comes up every year if you wanna change inside that fee structure. We're already at the twenty percent. So it's only if you would like to move the franchise fee down. Through the planning stages and budget, you guys always have a good discussion about what that franchise fees does for the community. So it's for your information. If you'd like to do something, there is an advertising period, so we could add it to the next agenda. If not, you can receive it for information. And I will respond.
I'd like to keep it at the same rate.
Okay, anyone else have any thoughts or questions on it? Okay, and then we'll just move on to the Northern House Society one.
Anybody go last year?
Uh, no, no, it wasn't me anyway. Okay, moving on to the Community Foundation. We did get some money for the pool, and Spocky's got some for.
CCAN, right?
CCAN, and somebody, Eric would got some money, I believe, for something. So there has been some money coming back into Littleton County through this Community Foundation.
We do quite a few grant obligations. They have different revenues, or sorry, different grant schemes through the year that you can apply for. So we, we apply for as many of the streams as we can fit into from the municipal standpoint. And then of course, also encourage all the groups, the Lions Club, the, and the Lions Club was the one that got a grant this year.
Okay, any questions on any of those? If not, somebody wished to.
So, there is a question.
Okay, George Lee moves to file these three calls. Any question on George Lee's motion? If not, I call the question will come up.
It did.
It is?
Well, mine is.
But it seems slow, like the split screen for the other one to come up.
Oh, there it is.
To try to load, yeah.
Oh, mine is for holding.
I think the internet's slow tonight. I think that's what's causing us the problem. Yeah, it's not responding at all, so.
I think I got everybody, because I'm on my third go round.
It's mine.
Okay, well, that's good, that's carried unanimously, then I guess.
Three times, nobody changed.
Thank you, I never saw it once, so. Okay, moving on to the cash statements. Oh, that came up there now, on mine.
I populated.
Oh, you populated? Oh, okay.
Here we go, two now.
Anyway, we'll move on to the cash statements in August thirty first.
Very straightforward, we have two hundred thousand in our account, about two point two in, in, in the general accounts. And then, of course, the ones that don't change unless we put funding to them, the NSI, the federal gas tax. Of course, the flags, that stays at the twenty thousand, so.
I'm not figuring out for information, please.
Okay, Martin moves it. Any question on Martin's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Can you move it a bit faster? No, it must be the internet, because I think Karen's comes up on Karen's, it's not coming up fast. Anyway, so, all those in favor? It's carried unanimously.
I'm wanting for something running in the background.
You know, we shouldn't be, shouldn't be.
Oh, here's one.
Well, there it came there. Right into the next one. Okay, so year-to-date summary ending. Any questions on any of those?
Very straightforward, there wasn't anything that draws any attention unless councillors have some questions about anything.
Paul wants to receive permission.
Okay, Paul moves to file this one. Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Show hands, I guess, those in favor. Oh, there is, I'll try and see.
It's just testing patience, I suppose.
Yeah, I still think it's our internet connection.
I think so too.
Because even when I go to the next document, it takes a second for it to load, normally it's not.
Which is quite interesting, because it hasn't kicked us out of the video. Usually when the internet is slow, it'll kick us out of the video.
Anyway, I guess a show of hands, those in favor, it's carried unanimously again. Okay, moving on to bylaw number fourteen eighty-four dash nineteen.
This one will take a while for everybody to load.
This is the one that we, our intermunicipal development plan.
And there is no changes from the county?
There is no changes. The county gave second and third reading, so all that's required is a third reading from town council. And this will be adopted by the board, and will come into place.
Okay, Lyle moves it. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor?
Mine's still loading.
It's carried. Yeah, mine's still loading. So.
I think it's carried.
Mine didn't come up yet. Did yours?
Yeah. It's processing.
Okay, well, we'll move on to eight one then. Welcome County Health and Wellness Christmas Dinner.
Based on the conversation from the last council meeting, when councillor Armstrong brought this forward, we added it to the agenda, put together the information, and opened for council discussion. Whether you would like to attend as a Christmas dinner for council.
I would move it, and I'd like to put them to side.
Okay.
Want picking dollar figures?
Well, I would like to. Go ahead, Michelle.
Sorry, I was just going to kind of propose if the funds were recovered just for the councillors, but we're all personally responsible for our spouse seats. I think that would be fair and probably the most balanced, so it's not costing a ton of money, but it still makes sense.
I have another offer. I'll buy all the councillors and the administrator a ticket, and it's up to you to buy one for your significant other. As a Christmas gift from John and I to the councillors. So it wouldn't cost the town anything, other than if you want, you know, if you want to bring your significant other, you can pay for them. Or you can leave them alone.
I did say that, but I think it's still recording, right?
It's up to you, but I mean, I'm not gonna say who you'd wanna bring. If you wanna bring somebody, you can pay for them, if not, they're on their own. This is up to you. But I would make that offer.
You could, you could elect to receive this for information.
Okay.
I received, or I received this for information.
Okay.
I just, I don't feel that you should be able to do that.
In the, in the history of the town council for years, Dave and Bev especially, they hosted something. At Christmas time for the rest of the councillors, just to say thank you and for us. And this is a great opportunity for us to meet as a council again. And so I'd just like to do that offer to you folks, if that's what you'd like. I mean, I'd buy a ticket for all of us. I'm not trying to be too frugal here, not offering to your significant other, but.
Well, I don't even mind just going as a council, we pay for everything.
But anyway, I'm willing to offer to purchase.
Well, that's very generous.
Eight tickets. I know it sounds terrible when Karen's sitting there, and she participates more than probably the administrator.
Well, grouping her, is it?
You won't have to buy me a ticket, I already have one.
No, how about I? But anyway, if that's, if that's, you know, we can get, just let Karen know or Kim know, and then we can get enough tickets and we'll get a couple of tables and.
I think this shows good support to the Health and Wellness Foundation too. And I think that was my whole intent, was that, not that I don't like to go out for supper, ever, don't ever get that wrong, but I think that it would be a good show from the town council. And it's very nice that you offer that.
Yeah, there's no question, the town supports Health and Wellness, but you don't see the council necessarily.
Oh, no, I'm not saying you don't support it at all, I'm just saying this is a public show.
Okay, so Laura moves this for information. And just let us know how many tickets we need, and then we can work it out.
Yes, we will.
Okay, any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Lyle's gonna just hand up the vote already.
Well, the minute you say you're gonna show your hands.
Raise your hands.
Well, I guess we'll show hands, those in favor.
There.
All right, go.
The very second you did it.
Well, maybe you should try it sooner, huh?
You should just raise your hands to begin with, and. Maybe Karen's playing games.
Well, I don't know, it'll need to scare her.
Messing with my line too.
My line never came up.
Well, since.
Five people.
Six people. Anyway, it's carried unanimously, I think so. Okay, moving on to the purchase agreement. As it states, everybody should have had an opportunity to read it over and make comments back if you have to.
Yeah, so since we sent it out to council for your review before we actually sent it off to HUMIC now, as you can see, we've received back a signed copy from HUMIC, so it's up to council now. Based on the information you've provided, you've seen it through. If you would like us to execute this and move forward with this deal, it's a motion from council to, to proceed.
I would make that motion to see.
Okay, Michelle? Any comments or question on Michelle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. See if it comes up. Should I go for show hands? It's.
You didn't even.
I'm sorry, George Lee, did you?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it, so. That's carried unanimously. Okay, ring it on, ring it on.
Ring it on.
Bring it on shot clock, it's ring it on. Bring it on shot clock. It's quite self-explanatory. I think that's kind of a neat opportunity to purchase something.
This is.
So anyway, is there any thoughts on?
It was nice of them to offer to us as well.
Could they use it for more than just the ring it, or?
I asked a question if they were different from regular shot clocks, and the answer was yes, but they didn't know what the difference was, so. And that was purely out of my own curiosity as well.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
I would really accept the offer.
Okay, Paul moves this.
So you approved the purchase of the two used shot clocks from the ring it association for a total of five hundred. And the big one for this was the funds to draw from the arena advertising operating reserve, because it does need a council motion to remove the money from the reserves, so.
Okay, thank you, Kim. And then Paul moved it. Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Who started the advertising reserve?
Okay, seeing it sounds a little slow, should I just call for a show hands, all in favor? It's carried unanimously again. It's gonna be a mess for you Karen tomorrow, isn't it?
Be way easier if you do them all unanimously.
Well, yeah, it happened so far, so.
We could just fill that out in Word.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I remember to write it down, good.
I, I've been taking good notes today.
Well, and again, I don't think it has anything to do, I think it's the internet personally, but.
We, we used to record your votes with by hand, so.
Oh, I know, I know, but I mean, I don't think that it's.
Yeah. It's, it's slow loading everything here today.
Okay, so moving on to the tourism merchandise, so. You can see that they expended their amount and have sold more than what they anticipated, so it's a good sign.
So, so they're really just asking for permission to, to spend more money in the expense portion of that, to purchase more merchandise for the upcoming Christmas season. So the discussion at the committee level was for six thousand dollars. So they formed a motion from council, because it's an overage and near expenditure budget. You can base that on actually knowing that the revenue will be there. So because of the amount, Bonnie's asking for council to make a formal motion to exceed. Or to approve the additional spending, but not to exceed. So a motion.
Kim, sorry, Kim. With the extra six thousand added on, what's the total of the budget then for the Tourism Society?
Forty-six thousand would be, oh, the total budget for the Tourism Society.
I think that rounds it up to an even fifty, doesn't it?
Yes, I, I'll just grab it here. So for, are you for the overall?
Yeah.
Oh, for the overall, would be an additional six thousand, so it would bring the total expense budget up to three hundred and forty-eight thousand. With a revenue of, at where we're at to date, it, it has an anticipated revenue of a hundred and forty thousand, we're currently at ninety-six. And we budgeted eighty-eight thousand in, and this was, this is, sorry, I actually prerequisite this, this is as of our August thirty first. So we budgeted eighty-thousand, eighty-eight thousand in income from merchandise, and they're currently sitting at eighty-two thousand seven hundred with the four months to go. So that's why they're asking for the extra six thousand, is to, is to get some more stock in before the end of the year, and more specific for the Christmas season.
So what was budgeted for the D V eight past summer?
It, it was made in income for expenditures, it was forty thousand is what they were gonna expend on merchandise. And they have, they have expended the forty-four thousand, and now they're asking for another six thousand to take it to a fifty.
Look, you're.
That's where the fifty paid for.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and looking back at years past, even when it was the society that, the budget for, for merchandise has gone from thirty thousand to eighty thousand, it was kind of all over the pace depending on the year, so. We tried to keep consistent with last year, and will make these slow increases. I'm guessing, I don't want the words in their mouth, but I'm guessing the Tourism Society is going to suggest a fifty thousand budget for next year.
I believe so.
So.
But there's things that have been requested, T-shirts specifically, that they don't have every size left. So part of this is to just kind of fill in where things are missing for the, for the Christmas season. Yeah.
Sorry, was there any kind of like, how was six thousand dollars, or how was the figure come up with? Just like a brief overview.
Well, we figured that six thousand would cover it, bring it to an even fifty, numbers are easy to look after. But it's, it's just enough to fill in, like I said, the T-shirts. There's things that are being requested that people, all the sizes aren't there. So instead of having small, medium, large, extra-large, maybe there's no mediums and no larges, and those are quite often your most popular sizes, right? So to make sure everybody's getting what they're looking for, they want to make sure they have that full range of stock for the fourth quarter, which for retail is your big money maker.
So is it just mostly kind of filling the gaps, or is that also including any replenishing?
Yes. It, it's a large part filling gaps, but also just to make sure there's enough stock there to get them through to the end of December.
Thank you. Michelle and I were at Southgrove, I don't even know when, for SoCo. And I just, when I was looking at this, tourism is the third biggest, what shall I say?
Industry?
Industry, that's a good word. In Alberta. And so I think we have to really take a good look at that. And, and the reason Southgrove brought it up is because they were looking at whether they want to incorporate tourism into Southgrove too. And that was just a thought passed out, I don't know if they're even gonna pursue it or not. But I was just thinking, if it is, you know, the third biggest industry in the province, I think we, we need to be making sure that we're doing our bit to bring people to town to provide them with something. That's just in the side, nothing to do with six thousand dollars.
And at the end of the day too, I mean, our tourism business or Liquid for Truck Center, it can only do as well as we allow it to with what it has, and with the resources that it has. So I do think that it's quite important that we make sure that, yes, being very much fiscally responsible, but also allowing them to have the resources to do, to support that to the best of their abilities.
Okay, any other discussion on it?
Just for personal curiosity, yes, when I think tourism, I think summer. But like you say, the last quarter of the year is when everyone's got to push. Does the tourist, with the tourist information center with their merchandise that they have, do they get a good push this quarter? Yeah, so that's what those numbers at the, at the bottom were, for the records that we had. That Bonnie was able to put together the numbers for the October first to December thirty-first of two thousand eight, nine, ten, and eleven. And you know, you could see it ranged anywhere from six thousand to thirteen thousand in revenue. And even last year, with it being closed, and we went down and opened it for the people that just came, it was two thousand dollars, so. So the, the hope is that the six thousand dollars that's spent to top up what they currently have will easily be made up for in revenue. The majority of the merchandise that they put down there has about a fifty percent markup on it, so.
And if you look at the financial portion earlier, it said that, you know, you know, they're budgeting eighty-eight thousand dollars for merchandising, and it almost reached that already, so, you know, we still have like, like Laura said, we still have the last quarter to go. And so it's probably a good move to fill in those spots, and if they can pick up stuff that, you know, within that six thousand dollar budget to improve their stock, why, why, why not type thing?
And, and we're still learning the, the happy medium in there as well. Like, how much, how much merchandise do you wanna carry over in, in, when you do your, when, when we do our account at the end of the year? We also have to roll over the value of what we have on stock, right, so. And, yeah, so they're just trying to balance that, trying to figure that out. Through the years, as they do that, when they're budgeting, eventually we'll, we'll get away from the highs and lows, and we'll have a very steady number of, here's what we generally averagely put into merchandise for a year to make this kind of revenue.
Okay, so you wish to move, let me increase the budget by six thousand dollars for merchandising? Nora? Okay, any, sorry, any questions on Laura's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Okay, I'll call for those in favor. It's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to number nine one, which is the REC Committee.
I have the one with the shot clocks.
Yeah, it came up twenty times, I think, on mine.
Mine, I think it was six thousand now, so.
Okay, so any questions on minutes from? That, that one's a June sixth, and George Lee has discussed most of the stuff, if not all, in there at least once. Any other, any questions on it? Okay, moving on to the ORSC Board meeting of June sixth again. Okay. Then we have the executive for August eight, for ORSC. Any questions on any of those? Okay, moving on to Volcan Tourism, August eighth meeting. So that kind of semi-discussed some of the thoughts that they had. Okay. No comments on that one, we'll move on to MPC September seventeenth minutes, draft minutes. Okay, so if there's no questions on any of those four, so we wish to move George Lee. Okay, so if there's no questions on any of those four, so we wish to move Georgia Lee, who moves to follow. Any question on Georgia Lee's motion? Hearing none, I will call the question. Still not working? Okay, show hands, all those in favor. It's carried unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to the council reports, Mr. Tater.
I went to the MPC meeting, minutes of which you see in front of you. And the other one I went to was the Seawat meeting in Oles, and I will let Tom speak to that since he is the chair.
Ooh, thank you. Okay, any questions for Paul? If not, councilor Ball?
Um, I was also at the MPC meeting, I signed in for Laura, and, um, that was the meeting I was at.
Okay, any questions for Georgia Lee? Mr. Madison.
I was scheduled to take part of the MPC meeting, but as I had a, as I had interest.
Conflict of interest?
And the one item that was on schedule, I asked Georgia Lee to take my spot and she graciously said yes, so I appreciate that. So that's all I had on this one.
Okay, any questions for Laura? Counselor Duns.
Um, I had the tourism meeting, which we have the minutes, I also had the library board, which is a large part of review after the summer break, because we have no meetings for July and August. Um, we're gonna be getting in touch with the friends in the library, see if anybody over there has more grant writing experience than those of us on the library board, to see if we can get a little bit of help, there's a few grants that we're looking at to help with some new lighting.
Okay, you can also ask maybe the town or the county.
Okay.
For assistance.
For assistance writing a grant.
Quite often, you know, the, the town or the counties, especially, you know, have more experience writing grants, because they do lots of them, but.
Okay.
Janice does most of the work for town, doesn't she?
Uh, Bonnie and, yeah.
But then, then down the county, I think they are really willing to help out if you need assistance.
For any, for any groups around.
We have some, a couple of ladies who are really interested in learning to do it. They don't really want somebody to do it for, it's more they want somebody to show them the ropes on how to do them properly, so that when they are written, it's not a hundred times back and forth kind of a thing, you know?
That's right.
Yeah.
And then we can give assistance for sure.
Yeah, and I think, um, new philosophy doesn't have to use as many fancy words either as it used to, so.
But there are key words that you must show over and over and over.
Yeah, yeah, it does help you pile it up, because, I mean, they still use a rhythmic process of, of what it is, but.
Those are the little tips that they kind of just need guidance with, they.
Laura, sorry for bugging, uh, Connie asked if, uh, you could make a mention of the, uh, open house that they're having.
Oh, yes, on the twenty-third.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, tomorrow night, they're having a open house in regards to legalized cannabis. They're having a gentleman up from, uh, a cannabis store in Lathbridge, and he has four or five different, different spots. And there will be an RCMP officer there tomorrow night to ask ques, answer questions, not ask them, he'll give you the answers. I think it's at seven at the library.
I believe so.
Yeah.
And it's information for anybody in the community about, uh, just some, the, just trying to clarify some of the questions that are asked about legalized cannabis with, not only from an enforcement side, but from a retail side as well.
And it's free, so head on down and see what you can find yet.
Sorry, Connie, Connie asked me, I didn't get a chance to talk to you before, and I apologize for throwing you under the squad.
No worries, I actually knew that one, so we're good.
Okay, anything else, Laura?
No.
Any questions for Laura? Okay, moving on to Councilor Lee.
Um, September eleventh, a Chamber of Commerce meeting, which could be, was just regular, kind of same thing, we had our one break, so catch up and then also going through, I'm arranging for, um, for training done by the Provincial Chamber of Commerce to come down. Um, and the tentative date is October eighth. On September twelfth, I attended the South Grove with Lorna, um, which is fantastic and all, we'll speak a little bit more to that. On the sixteenth, um, I had a victim services meeting, which mostly centered around, um, going through and giving a final approval on our solicitor general grant application, that's what we do yearly, and that's where ninety percent of our funding is. Really, it comes from the grant and then our casino, and that's, makes up the majority. On the seventeenth, my elder abuse board, um, elder abuse response board. Um, Matt and I was kind of starting to go through, um, different promotional ideas and also getting all of our bank accounts set up, because we just got our official society status, which is incredibly exciting. So now it's, we can do all of these things. And while they're, one of the gals that sits on it, um, is representative from the H S, and we also have another one from P C N. And well being there, um, they had heard through their network that Strathmore was having the Wheatland Seniors Resource Expo on the twentieth, which I'll get a little bit more into, because I was able to make it to. And then talking also and asking various questions with, um, Gabrielle, who is the coordinator for Claris Home. And Claris Home is, you've heard me mention quite a bit, because they're comparable in size, so we've been getting a lot of support from them, getting our forum finally started up. Um, on the nineteenth, had another B S U meeting, and it was from nine until noon. We're actually at the RCMP detachment, um, K D, which is what they call for, like our area for police, how, where we fall under. Um, we had a K D representative come down, and it was also supposed to have a representative from the Justice Solicitor General. Fortunately, the Justice Solicitor General representative wasn't able to make it. Um, but the K D representative did and did interviews based around victim services with our, um, victim services program manager, as well as asked the board various questions, our RCMP liaison, and then the, um, peace officer, the county peace officer, pardon me, because he actually just came on as a brand new member. And the detachment commander, um, of the RCMP. So that was definitely, um, a very long one, but it was really good, you know, it was great, it was a great communication. There's a lot of changes coming through, um, with the victims of crime grants and stuff like that. So victim of crime is part of what funds this solicitor general grant that we get for operating. And they're tweaking a lot of the, what restrictions as to what that can be applied to. Um, and a victim of crime, meaning like, if it only applies to situations that criminal charges are laid. So in situations that there isn't criminal charges laid, but there's still a tragedy or trauma, they're trying to kind of find a balanced funding for that, because that's actually not covered in the victim of crime grant, which is this solicitor general grant. So it's very involved issue right now, and we're working really closely with K D to kind of get that balanced and, you know, make sure that we're servicing the community to the absolute best of our abilities, but also make sure that we have the resources to do that, because victim services is such an incredibly essential service that we have. On the twentieth was the, that was the Strathmore, um, Senior Resource Expo, it was absolutely phenomenal, they do it every other year. And I'd like to, when, so they do it as Wheatland, and they don't actually have an elder abuse response network set up. But the way that they did it, and I wanna bring some of, um, the stuff, I've got a couple of emails out asking for copies of, from their organizer, because I asked the organizer questions, all of the vendors that they had, their, their keynote, their speakers, um, as well as kind of some various attendees, because they had over a hundred and fifty people there. Um, it was a really great turnout, I heard absolutely amazing feedback from them, it was really, really largely successful. So, you know, maybe it's something in the future that we might think about looking into. Um, like, so probably be a few months to get, because I pretty much put a call to everyone there, say, okay, you know, and gave a whole list of questions of specifics in terms of what it would really entail to put on an event like that, what are the pros, the cons, the lessons learned, the experiences, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that was kind of that, and then also, um, I had stopped by because of the, um, the biz conference in Claris Home. I was able to stay a whole long time, but still stopped by the Food Truck fundraiser, which was fantastic to see for the community, and it was, everyone looked like they were having a really great time, and that's it, that's all.
Okay, any questions for Michelle? Claris Home's over thirty-two hundred people, only two thousand.
Sorry, for comparableized or, um, elder, that's the community that we're kind of closest with, or.
Yeah. Anyway, okay, anything else? Okay, Laura?
Okay, uh, just a reminder from, um, Vulcan County Health and Wellness to submit your photos for the Heritage Wall, and they're hoping to have at least a hundred, I think they've got fifteen or so now, but they're hoping people go around the county and take pictures and submit them, and then they're hoping that maybe end up taking all the pictures and make a coffee table book out of it, and perhaps sell that to make some money too. And then, uh, I went to the South Grove, um, we had a couple of different speakers, one was Barry Morishido, and the other was Joseph Shaw showed up, he wasn't on the agenda, he showed up and spoke. And when I say for a few minutes, that was it, like, just very few minutes, but he did speak. And, um, Barry, well, Trevor is at Livingston, and I'm not sure about his last name, but he's the executive.
Slender. From there to busy?
Uh, no, the economic development fellow, yeah.
No, it's still slender.
Oh, it's just, doesn't matter, whatever his name is, sorry, I should have written it down. And he, I spoke, because he is from Sterling himself, and he, um, is the economic development person from Lathbridge. So he spoke first, and then Barry spoke, and it was, um, quite interesting, because he had just found out that day that regionalization between Brooks and the, um, County of Newell was not going ahead. I think he was fairly, fairly upset, but, uh, he was, um, sad to hear that the talks had been, uh, stopped. The, um, savings that they had been told originally was that by amalgamation or regionalization of the two, that there would probably be an eight to twelve million dollar savings on a ninety-five million dollar budget. He thinks that maybe it was more like two point five to three point seven five million on ninety-five thousand, which is still nothing to sneeze at. And, um, he said the commercial rates would, for taxes would have all been equal. The taxes within, I guess, say, Brooks villages, uh, would have been supposedly down ten percent, and the rural taxes, the farm taxes, would have been down twenty percent. And so he did speak on that, and then Joseph Shaw spoke for a few minutes. And then we had some information given to us, and I'm not sure how much, maybe through the Water Commission, you know about the Water Security Forum that's coming up on November seventh. And, uh, I'm not sure how much it would impact our district, but, uh, I think they're gonna get some more information out to us. And it's about water security and retention, and, um, I think that's what they're seeing as a, a big issue in the future. Especially in the southern part of the province. And then the other thing I was gonna mention was about the tourism, which you've already brought up, and thank you for filling in my words. While maybe, sometimes, sometimes the basic words in life are missing. That was it.
Okay, any questions for Laura? The one I had, well, really it wasn't a question, it's more a comment, we had somebody from Seawat that changed their whole schedule around to be on the Seawat for around, to attend a meeting, and, uh, the day before, they got a phone call and said, sorry, you're not on the agenda. And so it was really quite a hard feeling, and it's partly because, you know, Barry got put on and Paul got cut off, so. There's not a very love affair going on between Seawat and South Grove right at the moment.
Yeah, sorry, so Barry got put on and taken on.
Fellow of this Paul.
Oh, and not this Paul?
No, Paul Ryan got bumped, so Barry could be put on.
Okay, no, I'm just saying that he was there.
You know, it just looked like, uh, you know, anyway, it doesn't look good, and so there's gonna be probably a nasty letter sent to Seawat, I meant to, to South Grove over it, because, you know.
Oh, South Grove did it?
Yeah, South Grove did.
Oh, you're meaning Gary got put on the South Grove one?
He got put on the agenda for South Grove.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were talking about Seawat.
Paul got bumped from Seawat, who was supposed to be on there, and Paul was the one that altered his schedule, so he could go down and attend. And so it was very disappointing that the, the executive director of, uh, of, of South Grove did something as poorly as that. And it looks as bad as it does, because, um, yeah, it's, it's not, not a very good favor. So there's gonna be a nasty letter coming from the chairman of Seawat to the chairman of South Grove, explaining the disappointment we have with the way they treated us.
Not sure if my name would allow the both?
Uh, I couldn't tell you, anyway.
Because I don't think Joseph Shaw was on the, the list at all either.
I don't know, all I know is he got a phone call saying, okay. Okay, anything else from her? Okay, mine, um, I attended the attraction committee for the hospital, and, um, we, they had one doctor that had applied to come, and that person now has been bumped by another doctor. So it's kind of looks like they're, um, the doctor and, there's getting to be more doctors than there are physicians, so now there's a bumping process. So if you're a Canadian grad, you bump, uh, you know, a North American grad that bumps a South African grad or whatever. So the process is already starting to, you know, we're getting more doctors than there are physicians available in the rule, which is really nice to see. Um, there was a discussion that, um, the attraction committee should fall under, potentially fall under the, um, committee of, um, the Health and Mission. So there has been a, a discussion going back and forth, so I think that one will be on the agenda again. And it has to do with, to do with funding for the attraction group, and also it has to do with some of the things that are happening that is becoming a duplication, so it's more or less what, you know, one group is duplicating another group's, and so, you know, why, why duplicate it, why not just have all in one? So there has been a bit of a discussion on that. Um, I did have a Seawat, um, executive teleconference, it didn't last long, there wasn't a ton of information other than some, some of the dates, also there was a bit came out about it, is they're going to offer a half a day communication workshop, and it's to do with the, the site. And so there's a, been a, been a discussion going back and forth, of where it's gonna be and who's gonna be able to be invited. The, um, pool, we met, and, um, it's getting really close to being able to be brought back to council. And so it, um, it's planned for October fourteenth, council meeting. The architects were here to bring the final draft of what they're proposing and the budget. I was hoping that maybe I, we might take the plans with us.
I felt I'm ready to go.
To the event this week, and one evening, if we get a chance to sit down and we can all go over it, so that it's, um, kind of an idea of what is being proposed. There might be a little tiny bit of alteration in it, but it'll, it'll be very minor, I think. So I think it's something that we all can have, uh, opportunities to sit down around one evening and, and shoot the breeze over the pros and the cons and some of the ideas of what's going on. And, you know, there is a, a bit of a discussion going on, you know, of, you know, funding, but again, that'll have to be dealt with after we know what the numbers, they're kind of bringing back to us. Um, then, like Paul said, um, we had our meeting on Friday in Oles. And they have shortlisted the, uh, three municipalities, there was six municipalities submitted eleven sites. And this is unheard of, in the engineer's philosophy of a waste of energy plant. So the three municipalities, or the six that submitted was Coldar, Claris Home, Special Areas, which is up north in the Hannah, Drumheller, Hannah area, and then Newell, Wheatland County, and the County of Vulcan. The shortlist is Wheatland County, Vulcan County, and Newell, and so there's four sites. Um, Vulcan County has submitted two sites and the other two, so there should be a news release going out tomorrow of the. So there should be a news release going out tomorrow of the shortlist of the four sites. They're not saying where the sites are. We don't have a clue. If you're a really good calculator, you can probably figure it out when you look at some of the mapping. But they're not releasing the maps to the public. And part of the reason is, is they want to keep it until they do the geotech. But they've got it down to the four. So now with the crops coming off and all those sites, they'll go out and do some geotech on them. So by the end of October, we hope to have all four sites down to one recommended. And then probably either in November, December, we'll have a special board meeting. Where we'll invite all the municipalities and we'll hope to pick a site. Now, so that has something to do with the half day communication workshop. It's so that we can learn how to not say certain things or how to deflect certain things. Because in the history of most waste energy plants in North America, there's a bit of a dislike for some of them. And so I'm not sure why, because we meet all three Rs. We're going to recycle the waste. We're going to reduce it and we're going to reuse it. And we're not going to store it where there's a long term, potential long term liability. So anyway, the long and short of it is that that's the direction that SEWA is trying to move into, so.
So that, oops, will be done in conjunction with the communication meeting?
No, the communication meeting is just to bring everybody, they're bringing in a lady. I can't think of her name. I think it's Fred or something. But anyway, to facilitate it and discuss and show and talk about how we can communicate with the press and communicate with the public on what is going on and how to address it and deal with it. So that we're saying something that's right and not misleading the public and not, so anyway.
We're having that before they've made the final decision.
You betcha. But they've invited the three councils of the three municipalities that have been successful candidates and all the board of SEWA to that communication meeting. And so it depends on where it's at. If there's enough room, then we're going to invite any counselors from any municipalities that belong to the, to the SEWA organization. And it's planned for either the third or the fourth of October. And we're not sure where it is yet or which day it is. They're just doing some straw pulling. Excuse me.
That's not very far away.
No, it's next week. So we won't know until they do the straw pull. We'll see. Because they want, they want to make sure that we get as many board members as we can. And then we also get as many of them, three municipalities councils. Because they're going to be the ones that are potentially could be bombarded with questions of where it's at, how it's going to go, who's going to pay for this, you know, what's the tax basis? What's the, all those questions that are related to a waste energy. There, it should be, there, wherever it goes, there will be no taxes, taxes generated from it. So, but they'll get, you know, something like a franchise fees off to it. So anyway, that's it for me. Any questions? Paul did go. Jason came from the councils from the town and the, and the county. And we had a good meeting, I think.
It was informative.
I didn't get thrown out and, you know, they lynched me. So I guess I've kind of won it over a few of the members.
And I noticed you were always saying, about calling the question?
Well, I know. I, I'm trying to get into that habit. The other thing that I, I tried to do, there was a couple that, and we have never had that here yet. But there was a side discussion that went on when the speaker was speaking and I, I said something to them. And the one guy came over and asked me, he says, after he thanked me for doing that, he says, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have. He says, it drives me nuts when I go to something and try to listen and then I'm hearing somebody else having side discussions. And here he says, I was one of the ones, but, so I gave him a hard time anyway. Anyway, that's it for me. No questions? So somebody wish to move the council reports loud, for information? Any question on loud's motion? Here now, call a question. And then it's going to come up. Oh, yeah, there it comes. Yeah, there it goes. It's carried. Great. Thank you. A few people got out for supper meal and.
Yeah.
Okay, that was carried unanimously. So then we'll move on to the management activity report. So Kayla supplied it for your perusal. Has any question for Kayla?
Yeah, very straightforward. Again, unless there's any questions from council, we're just currently working on outstanding items. Anything in gray has been completed. No questions. I'll move on to my CAO report. Most significant, the work, I worked with CMA Plus and ACON to finalize the stuff for Highway 23. We have the agreement signed and the box culvers were supposed to begin construction today. We were informed that because of the weather, they're going to hold off until next week. Mostly so that they can get as much paving done as they can while they're there. They also have a good stretch of highway to do while they're doing this work. So that hopefully will take place next week. We were able to get confirmation from QB that the job descriptions that we rewrote for Public Works guys were acceptable and they will include them in the next negotiations. Worked with Adco and Fordus to move forward, trying to get the charging station, tourist center energized and rear to goal. And once that's, once that's up and running, they want to do a grand opening. Mostly the council will get the invite to that. Hopefully get some press release out of it as well, so. Another notable was the Minister of Municipal Affairs showing up in town for a photo opportunity at the, at the tourist center and, and I'll tell you, as an administrator, when you get a phone call that says the Minister of Municipal Affairs will be there in 10 minutes, are you ready? It's, it's nice to hear that it's for a photo, if not for anything else. But I did, well, I, Tom was out of town and so we asked Lyle and Lyle on short notice was to make it over. It turned out that our tourism committee just happened to be having a meeting at the same time. So they were all able to jump up out of their seats and come over. So he was able to meet our entire tourism committee. And Lyle had time to get a uniform on, which is, he'll say it's other reasons, but that's the reason why he has his pictures done at the tourist center. And hopefully when we get back from the, from the AUVA, the green screen is set up and everything's ready to go at the tourist center for all the council. And you don't have to go there all together. Lyle's got a sample. They'll just take your picture and then plonk you into the seats.
So right now I'm, I'm in the captain's chair. They don't want me in a captain's chair, so. But we'll maybe we'll get your pitch taken.
Yeah.
Well, that's great. And again, thank you for doing that in such a rush. Because I don't remember how far I was, but I was on my way up.
So you were Lloyd Minister?
Lloyd, but I think I was Norm Lloyd when Karen called, so. It wasn't like I could make it back, so I appreciate it.
We had about a half, we had about a half hour notice to, to get everything together. And he seemed very pleased with, that, that people were able to come and visit. And it was, they were on their way back from a meeting in Leftridge to go to Calgary. And so we made sure that he had, he and his staff had ears and pins and tried to convince them that maybe they should walk into the Calgary meeting wearing their ears. But I'm not sure if that happened or not, so. That was a nice, that was a nice visit. And it's, again, all that stuff, that speaks to our tourism, you know, the fact that, that he was able to stop. And I teased Lyle because while we were there, there was two or three other people, just tourists, that showed up and actually thought Lyle was there for the town greeting everybody that came. So he was able to get some information and.
So you're the, the town of Vulcan?
Greeter.
Or the.
I think I'll just wear my jacket every day to work, the yellow, red uniform.
The couple that were there were doing selfies with them and the whole.
Well, that's great.
And they thought that we had, you know, and based on that information, you know, it was discussed of whether we should have a counselor stand in there every day in uniform. Because these people certainly appreciated the, the time that was spent, so. Other than that, just basically administrative stuff I've been working with, getting the airport. We had somebody that's interested in the lot, finished the insurance information with Vulcan County. Pool meeting in my meetings of interest. I went to the hospital expansion lunch, which had a pretty good turnout for, for the day that it was. And, and then of course the pool meeting. We do have the plans. I'll bring them to Edmonton with us. And really it's because at this point, as, as Tom said, we don't think that much of the layout's going to change. It's very specific little things, but now you can actually see what, what we've been putting so much work to, to try and get accurate pricing. So there, there's a full set of drawings there. I'll bring them up. We'll throw them all down. And give everybody a chance to kind of beat them up and look at them, just so at least you have an idea of what's, what's coming. From there, I attended this week, Regional Emergency Management Meeting. The county, we've got the plan just about finalized, a few changes, the information that we had to add. And Lyle's going to get an invite to a meeting before the communications meeting on October 14th, I believe. The one that we're going to have in Arrowood and we're going to do some final stuff for, for next year and try to get approval for a plan to be sent back to all of the councils to approve. So we're making, making really good progress on that. Other than that, if there's any other questions.
Probably won't be the 14th. That's Thanksgiving.
No, no, okay. Our council meeting's the 15th, so it's the 18th, sorry.
Okay, so, Paul, you got a question for?
Just in regards to the meeting, the Minister of Municipal Affairs. One of the members of the tourism noted that, I never knew this because it didn't affect me, the block of accessibility to get your pitch taken to the spaceship. And I just thought that was great that he brought that up. And lo and behold, the town, or the town has put in a new sidewalk there with a ramp. So people with limited accessibility can go up there. And that's just one of those things where it's one of those things, yeah, it doesn't affect you. So that's great when people bring it up to your attention and we can get things done because I don't think anything like that was done. It was not done on purpose. We just didn't think about it at the time. So I just wanted to thank the town for that because I think that's great.
Great. I'll pass that on to Public Works here. That was part of the money that council put away a couple of years ago to make sure that we could do more recessed sidewalk entries. And that was one that Stu had identified to get it put in. So that was nice to get that finished this year. And like you said, the timing was really good. So other than that, that's my report and.
Okay. Anything, any questions for Ken? If not, somebody wish to move the administration reports? Lorna? Any question on Lorna's motion? I mean, now I'll call a question. And it's carried unanimously. Just to have that didn't work sooner for you, Karen, sorry. I still think it's sooner now to be late for. Anyway, adjournment. Michelle, thank you. Any question on Michelle's motion? Here now, I'll call a question. Looks like we can't wait. Oh, no, they did come up. And it's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Everybody that's heading up to Edmonton, drive safe. Be careful and we'll see you all there on Wednesday morning for sure. Some of you are going up tonight.
With, with uniforms on Wednesday?
Yeah, red uniforms Monday, Thursday.
Wednesday morning, right?
When's the communication meeting?
Seventeenth.
No, it's the Thursday, it'll be the 16th.
I think the Thursday is the 17th.
Was it?
Seven.